Self-President.
Here.
I'll be back in a moment.
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda as we present it.
Mike Boach, Mike?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes. Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike, yes. Here. Hey, everyone, this is Charlie Kernan. Okay. And we will...
Please agree the meeting's law.
Oh, yes, thank you. Well, the meeting law is on the door. In fact, they always have to remind me of that. Our agenda is questions from the board, basically, and then we'll have questions from the community member committee over there, and then from the teachers.
Okay.
So, we can start with the questions from Board of Education. Tell us a little bit about yourself and your professional experiences.
Okay. First of all, if you please call me Charlie, I would appreciate that. I grew up in North Omaha and ventured out of North Omaha and went to Wayne State. Took the opportunity to walk on and try to play football for Wayne State, and I took on that challenge, and I was fortunate enough to gain a scholarship and graduate from Wayne State. While I was there, I met my wife, Molly Kernan, and Molly Brown from Wakefield. We've been married thirty-five, thirty-six years now. And graduated from Wayne State, started my professional career thinking to go back to Omaha and get into teaching. One thing led to another, and I found my way in the refrigerated warehousing business. And walked in that door as a temporary employee one day. Fifteen years later, I walked out of that business as a warehouse manager. The last position I held was down in Norfolk, Nebraska. You might have remembered the company Beef America that was down there, the company that I worked for. We ran the warehouse side of that business for them. Spent fifteen years doing that. Obviously, they decided to close their door one day. I thought that might be the opportune time to get back into education. So, I went back to school, recertified my teaching certificate, ventured out to Bedford, Nebraska, fifteen, sixteen years ago now, as a health and PE and driver's ed teacher. And... Change of classes. Great. Before I go, before I go, if you please take time to look at this. But anyway, you know, fifteen years later, being in education, you know, here I am as the superintendent. Again, sixteen years ago, I started in Bedford, worked my way back to Osmond, where I spent five years at Osmond as the head football coach, health and PE teacher. Then I had the opportunity to go to Winnebago as their high school principal. I spent two years as the 712 principal at Winnebago. Then our school was hit with school improvement. We did not meet that, and so we needed to have somebody. We applied for the grant. We received $1.8 million from the federal government for school improvement grant. We took the elementary principal and moved her in charge of that. At that time, I was working on my superintendent degree, so I thought it would be moved be to move to the elementary principal's job so I could have a full understanding of what that would be like to be, you know, an el- or a principal K-12. I thought that would be good experience for me as I moved forward in my superintendency. I did that for two years, and then my last year, I was the K-12 principal in charge of student services. What I did there, I was the liaison between the tribal organizations that would come into our school, that would provide services for the kids there. I also worked with the truancy officer on student attendance. Then I was also the athletic director. Excuse me, activities director. So, I was there at Winnebago for five years. Then I had the opportunity, again, I ventured out west to start working towards my superintendency, towards what I feel is the final stage of my education. Does that mean I start again? And so, I've spent the last three years there at Arapahoe as the superintendent of schools.
My question is, since you're already superintendent at Arapahoe, what makes this job interesting to you and why did you apply for this position?
Well, I have two reasons. First of all, professionally, when I look at your school improvement plan and your annual report card that is in your packet, when I look through that, I see that your students do very well. So, obviously, the kids, your clientele, the kids care about trying to score well on tests. That also is a testament to your teaching staff. Obviously, they're teaching kids up, and you're doing very well on your tests. When I look at your financial statements, you have a very sound financial situation. You have good cash reserve. Your building fund and your equipment depreciation funds are very healthy. And so, it's not like what I had to walk into when I was at Arapahoe, when we only had $300,000 in our cash reserve. And my first year there, in December, we didn't know if we were going to have enough money to make our payroll and to pay our bills. So, that's a little less stress than professionally would be nice to have because we had to make some tough choices in Arapahoe that first year. And I'm sure there'll be other questions, and I'll point out a few of those tough decisions that we had to make back then. But not having to make those, there are a lot of stress and a lot of pressure with community people, with staff, and with boards. And so, knowing that professionally, you know, coming in and trying to just continue with the good things that, obviously, that have come before me, you know, that will be my charge. Personally, I look at this as a destination job. You know, I look at this as the opportunity, you know, to finish my career in a place where I want to be. That's Northeast Nebraska. My wife is a professor at Wayne State College. When I moved to Arapahoe, we looked at trying to do some different things through Wayne State, through North Platte Community College. None of those were any better than the situation that she had at Wayne State. For me to be in this area and be able to put our family back together on a nightly basis is huge for me. My son is at Allen. He's a fourth, fifth, and sixth grade math teacher. And to be in the same conference that he is in would be nice to be back closer to him, to watch him grow and develop as a teacher and as a coach. And for me personally, to be back in Northeast Nebraska. I've been in the Lewis and Clark Conference for ten years, graduated from Wayne State with a lot of the same people that are from this area. I have a lot of friends still here, families still here. I can't think of one thing why I wouldn't want to be here.
What are your strengths, strengths and weaknesses as a potential superintendent?
Well, I think my strengths is I'll first start with, again, getting back to the budget situation that when I went to Arapahoe and my first year there, discovering that we only had about $300 in our cash reserve that first year I was there. I think what my strength was is we were, I was able to work with the board. We came up with some strategies. And so, we were able to take our cash reserve to now, at the beginning of the school year, to over $2 million. So, I think what my strength was is I was able to problem solve. I worked with staff on how we can consolidate services at our school, get a halftime band teacher to also cover as our halftime media person to give a full-time job for that person, a halftime FCS person to take over for a retired guidance counselor. So, now we kept a full-time person there. Talking with our math teacher, talking with our science teacher, and filling their schedules with distance learning opportunities. So, instead of us buying classes and bringing in, we were able to send out classes. And we sent two classes to Maywood, which helped pay a fourth of my Spanish teacher's salary. So, a few of those strategies that I think, you know, helped us build our cash reserve helped us look at some of those things. So, I think I'm a good problem solver. I think I can work with school boards and work with staff to try to solve those things. Weaknesses? You know, I'm still, only my third year, I'm still learning. There's still lots of things to learn, you know, in this position when it comes to the budgeting. Had a great opportunity this year, looking in your past board meeting minutes about the old junior high, I'm not sure how you describe that. But over the last year, we've worked real hard at doing a facility analysis of what we've done. And we just finally received those numbers the other day, and we're looking at about $4 million just in doing life safety codes, you know, updating our school with windows. A $4 million, and that doesn't even replace a 1920 high school. So, we're looking at fire escapes, we're looking at elevators, just again to bring those buildings up. So, I think having gone through that process of analysis and working with financial institutions, you know, on looking at what it would cost for bonds, talking with community people about how is this going to affect with low corn prices? I mean, I think upkeep of facilities is probably one of the biggest issues facing schools. You know, nobody, it's tough to find the money and the dollars, you know, to put out a twenty-year bond to try to improve your school. I think that's, I think those are real challenges. So, my weakness is I'm still learning.
You've said some of these questions, there's some of your accomplishments as an administrator. I think you told us some of them already. Maybe elaborate on that.
Well, I think I'll start with when I was at Winnebago. We were looking at, looking at a new school improvement process. And so, along with the other administrators, we started looking at Charlotte Danielson. The other one was Marzano. Some of the teachers probably know these, APL strategies, looking at classroom management, looking at a school improvement process. We decided on the Charlotte Danielson model. We were also looking to, instead of just doing the Nebraska Frameworks accreditation, being a school on the reservation, we wanted to try to prove to the NDE that we could possibly take it one more step, and that would be the Advanced Ed accreditation. I believe you used to be Advanced Ed accredited here at one time, and now this year, I think you're going through the Nebraska Frameworks, if I understand that. Okay. So, we brought in the Advanced Ed. I led the entire school improvement process, K-12. Formed committees, did a steering committee. We formed subcommittees underneath that. And we went through the Advanced Ed accreditation process and were accredited, accreditedated, excuse me, at Winnebago. I think one of the other accomplishments is moving from the 712 principalship down to a K-8 principalship. High school is way different than elementary. You know, the structure of the elementary is pretty precise. High school is a little more liberal. And so, learning the two differences in that, I think, you know, really helped to be out, become a superintendent. I now moved to Arapahoe. And again, saddled with a first-year cash reserve. In three years, we've been able to improve that, gone through a facility analysis. We now have teachers with full schedules. We are now sending out distance learning classes. One thing that I proposed to our math teacher was to go to UNL and be trained in teaching UNL math classes because sometimes when our kids would go down to the university, they'd go in with deficiencies because they didn't have the proper math class that a kid would need to take in order to get in. And so, they were required to take a math class before they could maybe even take the required math class. So, I talked to my math teacher. We are now sending out college stats. We are doing dual credits with him. I think that was a real plus for our school. Being able to still maintain everything under Rule 10 with a part-time counselor and a part-time media center, but still able to work in some of our other staff into those positions. I'd like to, I'd also like to point out something just in my book here. If you could go under my leadership artifacts, and if you would find the page with the charts on it. Maybe about the seventh or eighth page in. Again, I've been able to take that cash reserve at the beginning of our, at the end of January, or December, excuse me. We were sitting at over 1.7, and we hadn't even hardly even started receiving any of our dollars in from the counties yet that month. Average daily cost per student. As you can see, 2012 was, thirteen was the year before me. 2013, 2014, you're wondering why that took such a dip. Well, again, that was one of the strategies that I approached our board at doing and our staff. Again, I didn't want to be a first-year superintendent to have to go down to a bank and borrow money to make payroll and to pay our bills. So, I suggested to our board, we just stop spending, just stop. We had a pair of leave in the fall for a different position, and I said to our staff, can we get by without hiring this person? We need to work on our cash reserve. How can we do that? And so, we rolled back around to 1415, and again, we're still under the fourteen, you know, thousand-dollar cost per student. And I believe we'll be under there that this year. We did this year take a step back to one building principal. Prior to that, we had two. So, that's probably going to be about $150,000 savings there for our school, which, again, I think will be able to help us. I guess the last thing I want to talk about is the very last chart, and that's our student growth. In the two years that I've been there, we have been able to grow 20-plus students. And my theory is, is we drive to go get kids to bring them to our school. When I got there, our preschool had thirty kids in it. We had fifteen in the morning, fifteen in the afternoon. And I asked, well, what is our limit for this, you know, because of size? You know, you can only have so many kids and so much space. Well, our space would allow for 20 kids. We're going to build it up to 20 kids in the morning and in the afternoon. Our preschool is now full. We just brought on another student, that was a special needs student. So, we now have 41 kids in our preschool. I drive 28 miles to pick up a preschooler. That does incur a transportation cost. But I'm of the theory that we work at the ground floor up. We build our elementary with our ground floor up, and that will translate into full classrooms as you get further down the road. It's a 10-year process, and I also know that that costs money. Transportation's not cheap. A little bit cheaper this year than it was two years ago with the cost of fuel. But we drive 28 miles to pick up preschoolers. We go get preschoolers in the morning, and we deliver them in the afternoon after they eat lunch. And when we're out delivering that first group of kids, we're picking up the next round of preschoolers, then they come into our school, and we take them home at the end of the day. There's a rule, though. If you live outside the district, all of your kids have to opt into our district. I'm not going to take a preschooler unless I get all your family kids. The second thing is, is if you do come, if we do take your child, we want you to stay. We don't want you to come here for a year, take advantage of our services, and then leave. So, we've been able to do that. We feel that once we get the kids in our building, they like it, the parents like it, and our kids are staying. We've had very few incidences where our kids have come and left just for the use of preschool. We only charge $100 a day, and transportation is free. That's a lot cheaper than I think they can get if they were to send them to daycare. So, I'd like to just point those couple of things out. I think the last thing I'd like to point out is if you turn to my budget hearing, if you could look at what we asked for in the 2014, excuse, 2015 year, a little over $4 million, and we were still asking 95 cents. Obviously, we all know that valuations took a pretty good jump that year, but we did continue to ask for a little bit more money that year, again, because I felt it was important to build that cash reserve. And so, we have been able to do that. If you look at my 1516 budget, you can see we asked for $250,000 less. I'm of the opinion that you only ask for what you need when you're asking for tax dollars from your taxpayers. So, I now feel that we're in a much better position. Also, in 1415, we needed to purchase a bus, so we needed to have a few extra funds for that. I hope that didn't get us off two points. I'm sorry.
We're typically a four-burge qualified candidate. How can you convince us that you're the right person for your job and you should do it?
Well, this is the chance, I guess, I get to talk about myself, and those aren't ever easy things to do. Again, as a kid from North Omaha, my mom and dad didn't have enough money to send me to college. I had the chance to go to college and earn a scholarship, you know, by getting to play football. I'm the first one in my family, of my siblings, to graduate from college. I told you the story about walking into a warehouse as a temporary employee. I went to a temporary employee agency looking for work in Omaha, waiting to receive my teaching certificate so I could start substituting teaching. Fifteen years later, I walked out as a warehouse manager out of Norfolk, Nebraska, in charge of an 80,000 square foot facility, 60-plus employees, $5 to $7.5 million. Here I am, starting out as a teacher, and now I've worked my way up to a superintendent. I think what you get from me is someone that's going to work hard, that's going to come in, do the best I can, give you everything I have, lead by example. I also hold myself accountable for the decisions that we have to make. And I think with me, I think you'll get a hard day's work, you'll get honesty, you'll get accountability.
Make this one a little easier for you. What do you do for recreation in your preschool?
I love to golf. Can't wait to get out to your golf course. I like to, I like to learn how to fish. Couple of years ago, my wife and I, you know, we were talking about the river system, and a lot of people in this town and area, I've known people in Osmond that have had cabins and stuff off on the river. My wife and I, a few years ago, purchased a lot up by the west entrance of the dam. My goal someday is to retire up there, you know? And I'd like to learn how to fish, so that's... Abid, big Red fan, I mean, come on, who's not? It's been a little harder the last few years. Big Creighton Blue Jay fan?
He said Blue Jay behind that, right?
Well, I guess one way I can sum that up is if you look at the first page of my philosophy, and it talks about the relationship that we need to have as a board and as a superintendent. Together, we need to work at building the vision that you want for this school. It's up to me to be the servant of this, to communicate that vision, and to be the servant leader to our school district and to our teachers. To me, I think it's a relationship that we've worked together on. We have a consensus on, we're not always going to agree with things, and that's the beauty of having seven people in a room, you know, looking to make decisions, input from community, my expertise from the educational side, working together, again, to develop that vision.
What's your philosophy in delegating authority?
I'm not a micromanager. I've always considered myself a coworker. I'm not going to walk into a math teacher's classroom, sorry for math just hap- I'm looking at you, math just naturally comes. And I'm not going to tell that math teacher how to do their job. I think also by delegating, it gives people, you know, a chance to be a part of the process as well. But I'm not going to micromanage. And I think it's important that I'm considered a coworker. My job isn't any more important than the teacher in that fourth-grade classroom. My job's not any more important than that bus driver driving on that, getting on that bus in the middle of winter at 7:00 in the morning going to pick up our kids. I am a coworker. It's up to me to try to give the teachers the best kind of tools that they can have and the best kind of support and meaningful professional development to make their jobs easy.
How do you maintain that accountability?
I think through transparency and through communication. I think tell people what I'm doing and tell them why. I also think that being accessible, being where people can see me so they can ask questions. You know, so I can share the story of our school, share the things, the good things that we're doing. If things aren't going well, try to explain those things as well. I think communication, being transparent, being accessible, and answering questions.
My next question, how would you with me?
Well, again, fortunately, you know, having spent five years as a principal, I understand those duties very well. I understand, I'm not sure how long you've been a K-12 principal, is that? Because I think you used to have two principals here, didn't you, at one time? Randy Court and Randy Clues, I think.
Five years is...
Four years now? So, we're just now making that transition. Again, I feel I can be a great support, having done that job. And that's why I felt very comfortable at Arapahoe suggesting to them in a cost-saving measure that we go down to one building principal because, again, I've been the K-12 principal. I understand the daily routines, the daily challenges, the daily responsibilities of that position. So, I feel I'd be a great resource for that.
What are the good things that, what are the things, main things that a good principal does?
Well, it's not a lot different than my job. I think a good principal, you know, helps support teachers, gets in the classrooms and helps them with their daily instructional, helps them with their assessments, helps them with their students, you know? It's the really thing that I can help with the student. Unfortunately, it seems like that interaction with the students sometimes comes in the form of discipline. And so, those would be things that, you know, hopefully, I can help with. And I've had lots of training in Boys Town, Love and Logic, APL, Charlotte Danielson, lots of classroom strategies that hopefully I'd be able to help the principal with that we can share with our teaching staff.
Have you ever been involved in teacher negotiations? If so, what do you feel is the role of superintendent?
Very actively involved. I recommended to our board here, just as, two years ago, we purchased a teacher negotiations package that has really helped us, you know, with discovering our array and being able to really drill down and look at what's a 3% raise going to cost, what's 6%? Anything we can get you guys, I'm all for. So, the more we can get, so having that model and being able to run through those things, looking at what extra duty would cost, having all those factors in front. I think one of the biggest challenges this year was the Affordable Care Act and the part that that played into teacher negotiations this year. We are at 50-plus employees. I thought I read you guys are too, or, and so, you're going to be looking at offering a single coverage to all employees type of thing. So, we're looking at doing that. We'll probably start that next year. Have you started that this year or is that something next year? Okay. So, we're basically in the same boat. So, I believe the Affordable Care Act had a big play in it because when we looked at, you know, our non-classified staff and the number of people that we would be looking at that, we were talking over $100,000. Now, how is that going to impact, you know, the teacher negotiations? You know, when we look at the bottom line, you know, of everything? And that's, and for me, that is my job, is to share with the board bottom-line numbers.
You've already answered this question already. Are you familiar with financial accounting system budgets? Have you done the school budget?
Yep. Yep, I've done three of them now. I'll admit, that first year was scary because it's entirely different than, you know, what I was used to in the business world, you know, where we were counting for three years worth of budgets. And again, I think, you know, I have a good firm understanding of valuations and levies. Budget authority, you know, in my packet, you'll notice I have your budget in here that I was able to get from the state auditor. I also looked at your budget authority for next year. You're looking at about $5.1 million of budget authority. At Arapahoe, I've only got like $4.2 million, so you have a few more dollars to work with up here. If you also look at, in here underneath my leadership artifacts on my budgeting, I do have, it would be behind where I did my tax request. Again, if you look at our actual disbursements, 2013 through 2014, if you look at the depreciation fund, that was one of the funds that I... and fourteen, if you look at the depreciation fund, that was one of the funds that I did several dollars out of, so we could try to save money out of our general fund, again, to try to build our cash reserve. So I understand the different funds, the lunch funds, the activity funds, and I think one thing that's very difficult for a lot of people to understand, if you look at your totals down at the very bottom, when you start to your left, and you look at four point four, four point six, and then all of a sudden you look at seven point two, and they're saying, oh my God, how come we're spending so much money this year? What people tend to forget is, we have to put that total dollar amount of the depreciation funds, what we feel like we'll spend in activities, our school lunch program, the special building fund, all of those things come into play underneath that column. And so I think I do have a pretty good, a pretty good handle on your budget and how to put one together, you know, and the needs.
How does a superintendent and Board of Education encourage great teaching?
Starts with that vision, you know, what do we want? What do we want for our kids to achieve? And so that's where we start, and then we work our way back to the teachers. If we want our kids to get here, what do we need our teachers to be able to do to get our kids here? And that starts with us. Distance learning opportunities, dual credit classes. One thing that's really interested me is career education. And I'm very excited about getting back closer to Wayne State College and doing some career, some career tech things in computers, in information technology, in robots, those things, weather stations, those things have always really piqued my curiosity when it comes to the science, you know, part of it, and so I think those are the things.
What is the most important first step that you would take as a superintendent?
Find out where everybody lives, find out your first name, find out what you do, and find out everything I can about the staff. The first thing I would do is, is meet with staff, find out what makes them tick, what do they teach, what do they do well, what do they need to make their job better, is get to know staff. And that includes, and not just the teachers, but that's the custodians, and that's the bus drivers, and that's, and that's the cooks, and it's the paras, it's not, it's not the teachers, but it's the entire staff.
What communication methods would you use between the school and the community to help establish good community relationships?
I think one thing that's probably the biggest that really goes, maybe unnoticed, is being accessible, being visible. There's not a lot of people that are gonna come up to the school and maybe ask you a question, hey, I saw this, you know, or I heard this, you know, but if you're sitting at a ballgame, or if you're sitting at a community event, you know, that gives them the opportunity to come up and say, hey, I got a question, you might, you know, if I ask you this question? I think that goes for staff too. If people see staff here, sometimes they're not gonna call up and maybe ask a question, but if they see staff at activities, again, at community events, I think people will ask questions, be accessible, and not just say, oh, well, I can't talk about that now. But try to give them honest answers, and if you can't, then, hey, I'll try to find that out and I'll get back to you. I think that's one way of communicating that, that really goes unnoticed. I think obviously you have newsletters, the newspaper, my goodness, that is, that is a huge way to communicate with your community, is by the use of the newspaper. They cover everything from pictures to, you name it. Board meetings, I'm sure, you know, lots of ways the newspaper can work for you. Webpages, you know, at your school, you know, how updated are your teachers' webpages where people can go online? What we do at Arapahoe is, is some of our teachers will take their, their daily classroom instruction from their SMARTboard, load it onto their computer, and so kids will be able to get to their laptops. We do a one-to-one at Arapahoe, and so they're able to get to their laptops at night if they have questions. So websites, teacher websites, our school website. I'm not sure what kind of notification system you work off of, is it a, is it a text message when you send out messages about school, or do you have a voice messaging? Do you have a voice?
Yeah, and it does text messaging and email.
Okay, yeah. What is that?
Hold alert now.
Pardon?
Hold alert now, it's Blackboard.
Alert now? Yep. We did that at Winnebago. I brought that into that school, and I thought that worked out really well, was being able to communicate with parents that way. We don't do that at Arapahoe, we send a text message, but the problem with a text message is you can only get so much information in this text message box. It's not like if you were sending a text message to one, there's only so much we can get in there, so.
How do schools improve?
Well, schools improve, and that starts with myself and our building principal. We need to have meaningful professional development, and not just, and not just shotgun it, I mean, get something really good, and stick with it, and get better at it. I think that's something that I work with the principal. The principal and I work together on instructional strategies, you know, do we have a common language here? That is one thing that I'm working at at Winnebago, is we did not have a common language of instruction, meaning everybody was gonna say, is this a bell ringer, or is this an anticipatory set when they walked into a classroom? And so, we've gone with the APL classroom strategy model, and that is gonna be our common language of instruction. So, when I, or the principal walks in, from a kindergarten room, from a preschool room to a 12th grade classroom, we're all gonna be hearing the same things, hopefully, and if we're not, then we're also developing right now a walkthrough, just a quick walkthrough evaluation for the principal and I, and a committee of teachers are working on, so we can continue to support our teachers with those instructional strategies. Hey, this is quickly what I saw today, this is quickly what I heard today in your classroom, that's good use of APL, or hey, there's instructional strategies for APL, that maybe that would've worked in this type of a situation for you. So I really believe that that starts with building principal and myself. Professional development, good instructional strategies.
How are you in decision-making?
I try to use a three-pronged approach. First of all, is it good for the school? Second of all, is it good for our staff? And third of all, how does it affect our students? And so, when I, obviously financially, I have to be concerned with financial things, that's one of my responsibilities, is the financial end of it. How does that affect our staff, you know? So, before I make any decision, I, I sometimes get accused of being slow at making a decision, but I wanna try to get and gather as many facts as I can. And then, the last thing is, how does that affect students? What is the bottom line? Because really, that's the reason we're here. None of us would be here if we didn't have students. So, the bottom line is, how does that, excuse me, how does that affect them? And then, we go through our decisions, it's like any other decision-making process, what are the good things, what are the bad things? I make the decision, I'm accountable for that decision, I get that, but then take the time to reflect on it and see how that worked. Did it work? Didn't it work? What could we have done different? And again, that's...
Have you dealt with co-op activities with other schools and are sharing your staff with other schools?
Slightly, but in, but in a different way. Not activities, but when I was at Winnebago, they also had a Catholic school on the Winnebago. And so what we did is, we provided special education services there, and a title teacher to help them with their kids. I thought that was a great relationship, having the chance to work with that Catholic school and to be able to provide services for them. So that was a joint effort between us. We were also able to purchase, when we had extra dollars, and sometimes we were able to help purchase some extra laptop computers. Also on the reservation, there is a, what's called a youth facility, and what we did there is, when our kids, I say our kids, but when kids would get taken from the home, or they would run away, or they would get into trouble, they'd get put into this youth facility, and so we supplied a teacher up there as well. We also supplied all the technological equipment that they needed in order to, you know, have the same opportunities that the kids had at the public school. So we had a teacher go there every day for a half a day. So, so I haven't really done any co-op with anybody. I read through your board minutes, where, you know, there's been some talk of that, it's been kinda off and on with those kind of opportunities. This last fall at Arapahoe, there's a school just north of us, they didn't know if they'd have enough kids to even field a six-man football team, and so they approached us, and so we went through the due diligence of looking at cost, you know, for co-op, you know, where would games be played, would we change uniforms, and try to go through that, go through that whole process. At the end, we felt we didn't have enough time to really seriously give that a lot of thought, because of the November deadline when it came to declaring whether you're gonna play eight-man, eleven-man, or six-man football. So, I've gone through the processes, just never, you know, have never been physically a part of it, other than what we did at Winnebago School.
What would be your ideal-sized school to work in, if, you know, you already picked this school due to the vocation you said, what would be your ideal-sized school?
You know, I think the state has done some studies, and I think they, they think the optimum size is about seven hundred and fifty kids, and I think that's where they think you get the most bang for your buck, when it comes to the lights, when it comes to the transportation, when it comes to utilization of the staff. I mean, you look at Omaha Public Schools and Lincoln and the larger school districts, and you look at their cost per students, I mean, their cost per students are way down, just because they have just so many kids, you know, and the staff, you know, that, that all, it's just, just the pure number of kids keeps your costs looking better. You know, I don't know if there's an ideal size for me. I, at Winnebago, we had over five hundred kids, and then at the Catholic school, we served another hundred kids there, so we had six hundred kids we were taking care of. You know, out at Thetford, we didn't have very many kids at all, maybe a couple hundred out there, so at Winnebago, or at Arapahoe right now, we have three hundred and forty-two kids, so I, you know, if we can find the quality teachers, and they're out there, we're not far from Wayne State, you know, and they're, they're a great teacher college. I haven't walked around your facilities, I don't know how much room you have here, you know, to accommodate that, if you have empty classrooms, you know, if you have empty classrooms, then for me, job security is getting kids in those classrooms, is hiring teachers.
How valuable do you feel technology is in a school setting?
Well, you look at 21st century jobs, I mean, look how much we, we all use, you know, my laptop, I use every day for my job, and kids are gonna be using those more and more. Again, at Arapahoe, we are one-to-one with our ninth grade to our 12th grade kids. The school bill, Phillips-Sat bill, this is our ninth year of doing that. We feel like that's our responsibility, no different than having a SMARTboard, you know, in a classroom for a teacher, no different than giving a teacher a laptop to do their job. We feel kids need to have that technology. What we're able to do is, and this year, we just renewed our lease, so, and it's amazing how it's gone down over the years, and I believe we signed a three-year lease, I think for about a hundred and fifty laptops, for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars over three years. But what we're able to do after that three years is, Apple lets us buy that used computer back for a dollar. So now what we're able to do is take those hundred and thirty-five computers, and now move those down into our junior high, and then we can take those other hundred and thirty-five that are now gonna be getting close to being obsolete, four years old, five years old, you know, the four-year-olds on down now into our elementary. So, we have laptops, we have, we have carts, we have, we are just about a one-to-one about every student in our, in our, and I think that's important, again, because of the 21st century. And my wife would kill me if I didn't say anything else, she's a professor at the college in the computer technology department, so if I, I'm glad she's not in here, so if I said anything less of that, we'd be having the discussion.
Thanks. Discuss it, that's a difficult personnel problem that you've dealt with and how it was handled.
I know, teaching long-distance learning classes are not easy. I've never taught one, but I've sat in on them, and it is difficult when you have a teacher outside of the classroom trying to teach kids, you know, in different places. That's never an easy proposition. I knew, when I was trying to fill our Spanish teacher's schedule, that she would not be happy, and she made it vocal that she did not want to teach distance learning classes. My math teacher was somewhat open to them, but he said, it's hard for me to teach if, you know, if I don't have the tools to teach. And I said, well, what if I get you the tools? So that's the teacher that I was talking about, that I sent to Lincoln, so he could be certified in teaching accredited Lincoln math classes. And so now he is piping out a college stats class to other schools, and it really likes it. The Spanish teacher, trying to fill her schedule, I went to her and I said, hey, I have an opportunity, a school district contacted me and wanted to know if we wanted to distance learn any Spanish classes, and I said, I understand you don't have a full schedule, and I would like you to try to help this district out, because it is, again, about the kids, to try to help this district out and send two Spanish classes to them, and it would just be you and them, you won't have to worry about our kids in that class. She took that responsibility on, not sure how it would end out, I wasn't sure, because I know she was apprehensive, but at the end of the school year, she said, you know, it wasn't as bad as I thought it was gonna be, it worked out kinda nice, because it was just me and those kids. It wasn't trying to take care of our kids in my classroom, I was able to just focus, focus on those kids. For me, financially, we were able to pay for a fourth of that teacher's salary from that other school paying our school district. The other example I'd like to use is our band teacher. Again, my first year there, the board came to me and said, you know, and I went to the board saying, we have a financial, we need to do some things, I think I've said that enough, and they said, well, what are we gonna do with our band teacher? She teaches three band periods a day, and she runs three study halls in the afternoon. Can we move her to a point-five employee? And I said, well, I said, I think we have a need in our library, why don't we move her to there? But I said, in order to do that, I think we, I think what we need to do is offer her tuition reassist, or reimbursement. And so I worked with the board on developing a tuition reimbursement plan, before I went and talked to the band teacher and said, hey, either you take this, or you're gonna be a point-five employee. I was able, I was able to convince our board that this would be a good thing for that teacher, and so she agreed to the tuition reimbursement, and so she went back, and she's now working on her library endorsement or media endorsement. That kept her as a full-time employee, but it also, I felt that if our district was gonna ask an employee to do something for us and to make a move like that, then we should try to assist them. And so what we do is, we, we now pay for up to nine hours of credit hours a year for her to go back and get that, get that degree. She wasn't happy going into that, but, you know, a year later, the library has never looked better, she's doing a great job, and I think she's fit into that role well.
What experience do you have in writing grants to help supplement the school funding?
Well, that's, that's part of my job, is, is to write the grants. We go in and I do the poverty grant every year, we do our Title I for the No Child Left Behind Grant, we go to in and do our special education grant, and then we do our ELL. It was the first time I ever did an ELL grant, was to help pay for our ELL teacher. So, I write grants that pays for our preschool teacher, that helps subsidize our special education, that pay for our ELL, part of our ELL teacher's salary now, because she's now the Spanish teacher. So she went back and she's now working on her ELL degree, and then our poverty and our title.
Do you have any experience, and I think you've touched on this, with planning and carrying out building additions and renovations and doing buying?
Can we get to my portfolio? Okay, it would be under the, under the tab of the planning new schools documentation. And I believe... No, excuse me, I'm, it's under the Arapahoe. No, excuse me, I'm sorry, it's under the Arapahoe one, I'm sorry, under my, towards the end of my, I apologize for that, not the, not the Plaid New ones. And here, we kind of started the process. And again, it was facility, identifying space needs, establishing objectives, doing a master plan, and then working on cost. And so, we, the next step, I'll wait, I'm sorry, everybody, everybody there now. On the next page, we kind of, it's got dollar signs on it. It looks like this. We started looking at, well, what could we do if we eliminated, because we have, our shop is in a building out back, our weight room's out in an old bus barn, you know, they're just not very, our kids are outside, we don't have very good security at Arapahoe. Our kids have to, we leave all our doors unlocked, out in our shop, out in our FFA building. We don't have restrooms out there, so we have to leave back doors unlocked because we have a lot of ladies now participating in FFA. And so, again, we don't have restrooms out there. So, anyway, we started identifying space needs. What could we do if we started doing either renovations or building projects? So, we started looking at dollars. We went through a facility, a site analysis of every existing building that we have right now for ADA compliance, fire sprinklers dead in corridors, emergency lighting, fire alarms, restroom locations, air exchanges, that's not listed here. So, we went through that whole process, okay? We knew this was going to cost us money. So, I talked with, Emeritus is our financial advisor at our school. And so, we worked through some projected scope, dollar amounts, what would that bond size look like? What's interest rates these days? What impact is that going to have on a levy? And then, if someone were to ask me, "Hey, if I had a hundred-thousand-dollar house, you know, and we had a five-million-dollar bond, what's that going to be my cost for the year?" So, we did a lot of breaking out of that. And again, here, just the other day, we just finally now received, you know, some preliminary costs. And if you turn, this is for an entire, this is for new gym, new school, demoing the old building. But if you look at the next page, it just talks about, you know, renovations and bringing our building to compliance. We're talking four-point-one million dollars alone just to bring our school building into ADA and code requirements. We don't have the money to do that. I mean, we could probably levy for that and our valuation is seventy-five cents and right now, we're doing four cents on our building fund. But that valuation is so high, we could probably levy for that. But to sit there and do a four-point-one-million-dollar project without having your community support, I think it'd be fairly foolish. And so, so, we're looking at running a bond in Arapahoe. But I guess my experience is going through this analysis, looking at costs, you know, and projecting and having some real hard, solid numbers to try to explain.
Okay, do you have any questions?
I do. As I, as I look through your, what your superintendent wrote, when you have your school accreditation visit coming up, you know, he talked about some of his challenges, about declining enrollment, poverty, inexperienced staff, and the use of data. I guess, when it comes to your billing and stuff, again, looking at your board minutes and you talk about the old part of the school, where are you at in that process? I know you were offering tours, I think, at your parent-teacher conferences. How did, how did that go?
We did not have very many people go through it, but we're trying to introduce the idea because many of us feel like that building has served its purpose. And so, we wanted to start some discussions about the building. So, even though we didn't have very many people go through the tour of the building, we did have a lot of people talking about it and asking us questions at parent-teacher conferences and things like that. So, we have the discussion beginning.
There's a little more to that than just the old building, too. We have like a band room and a woods room that doesn't have air conditioning that we've been trying to figure out how to get that done. And we could spend fifty thousand dollars for an air conditioning unit for those two rooms. But if we tear this junior high building down, we can tie all that into one air conditioning unit, you know, so there's some, there's some sidelines to more than just building.
When you're talking about co-op-ing, the discussion of consolidation and those types of things, people would say, tying a home, are you going to build a new school? We would go through consolidation, even though so far, everybody's been close to that. It would make much sense to build a new building and have that.
You can see some of these numbers, it's not, it's not, the construction costs are probably, you know, a hundred-and-eighty to a hundred-and-ninety dollars, you know, a square foot. And then, you're talking about another, what surprised me was another twenty-four percent of that cost goes towards architects and construction managers. And so, now, all of a sudden, now you get to that two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, you know, a square foot and it's tough.
We had to go through some things when we were at that point, you know? We were very interested in starting the discussion and seeing what people thought, getting some ideas. We want to tear this building down and build a new weight room and a new band room and some of those things. We want to put it over there or both of the three, we have all kinds of options. So, it was, we were starting the discussion.
What do you think your priorities are for the school in the coming year, next year? And that might be tough, you have a superintendent that's, you know, probably co-op-ing.
Junior High, junior high sports, you know, this time, we've got low numbers and we want to keep the programs going, of course. So, we're looking for advice schools that we could, we could look at and do something with.
Well, again, not, you know, with Laurel and Coldridge, you know, you could probably glean some information off of, you know, how that went and, you know, how that history of that all, you know, took place. And so, that would be some real relevant, at least neighborhood-wise. Well, I see you have very healthy reserves in your building and your equipment depreciation funds, so.
In anticipation of some of the, for company to build, up there on the, okay?
How active is your foundation in the school? I see there's a foundation. I'm the secretary and treasurer to the Arapahoe Educational Foundation. We have a pretty active, we do a presentation at the Alumni Banquet every year, you know, to try to solicit funds, you know, to try to support scholarships. We probably give out twenty-five scholarships out of our fund, out of our foundation fund. And I think that's been a real nice plus for our kids. So, of course, it takes, you know, beating the streets, you know, and people, you know, putting money into the foundation and things like that, so I was just curious.
Our local association, teaching association offers lots of scholarships. We do that every night to give funds to protect the curtains in the gym. But as far as our organized foundation.
There's a few individuals that use scholarships, you know, in the more, you know, such things. Okay, do I take a break for a few minutes and then come back? Let's take like four or five minutes and then we'll be back. Okay, we'll have some questions from community members.
Okay. Do you have any ideas on how you can increase parent participation within the school and also attendance at school board meetings?
You know, that, that is tough. You know, I think we all struggle with that same thing. I guess my experience is we get very good attendance at parent-teacher conferences with our elementary parents. That always seems to be the greater number of parents that show up. And then, as the kids get older, you know, that participation of the parents seems to lessen a little bit. One of the things I think that, you know, that has helped, at least in the lines of communication with parents, is being able to send a text message or an email because people are always working or it seems more people in the family and the household are now working and working maybe two jobs or longer jobs or whatever, just to make ends meet. And so, being able to text parents with updates, being able to email parents with updates, I think has been a tremendous help for teachers, being able to communicate with parents. Gosh, I, you know, I don't know if there's a magic bullet for getting people involved. I guess, I guess it's getting out there and trying to find those people. If you do get some people, you know, work with those community people to try to get more community people in, you know, there's only going to be a certain amount of people that come up here. A lot of times, it's parents of our kids. But we can't forget about, you know, the business people in our community. We also can't forget about people that don't have kids in our school, you know, that do pay taxes, you know? So, how do we reach those people? How do we get them to come up and get into our building? That's a great question. I guess, work with your staff, work with the board, get to know community people and just, you know, try to get the message out.
What do you consider to be your greatest contributions to the schools and districts you have worked in? And in light of that, what do you feel you can bring to our district?
Well, I think what I've learned from each school district is the different things, you know, coming from Thedford, being in a ranch community there, being a part of that and with kids, that was kind of the, you know, the beginning of distance-learning classes, understanding that. Could you repeat that question? I didn't start out very well.
Yeah. What do you consider your greatest contributions to the schools and districts you have worked in? And then, in light of that, what do you feel you can bring to our district?
Well, again, starting at Thedford, I think communicating with the parents when they were able to come into the school to be with their kids. A lot of them, you wouldn't see very often because they'd be out on the ranch and it was nice when they were able to come to activities and visit with them. At Osmond, you know, I always felt, you know, trying to be a part of the school culture. I didn't live in the town of Osmond, so I tried to do everything I could while I was there to visit with parents, you know, about our school. At Winnebago, it was getting parents into the school and how can we best help kids? And so, I think what I learned probably at Winnebago the most was thinking outside the box. How can we help take care of a kid that comes from an environment that's not conducive at all to education, much less survival? So, what could we do in our school to get this kid, you know, a high-school diploma so they at least have a fighting chance, you know, to make something of themselves? At Arapahoe, it's working with the community and part of the Legion Club and part of the community club. It's trying to get our message out and just try to be a part of the community and be a resource and be a conduit between the school and the community and just try to keep passing long information.
If you had to cut the budget, what avenues would you take?
My salary, I'd start with my salary. I'm probably the most overpaid one and do the littlest. I mean, if you look at a kindergarten teacher, I can't believe what a kindergarten teacher goes through in the course of a day. That is one busy job. They are, they are way underpaid. You know, there's several different things, you know, to look at when it comes to cutting budget, you know? Do we, are lunch prices, are they properly priced, you know, to make sure that we're not having to take money from the general fund and supplement our lunch fund? Do we have good prices? You look at everything, our utilities, we're looking at putting in different lights in our gym. It's going to be an upfront cost, but we also feel that we'll get our payback in just a couple of years and now we'll have a cost savings. I personally negotiate the fuel contract with our co-op there in town, you know, for our transportation needs. What are our transportation needs? I look at our busing. Can we get by with one bus or do we need two buses en route? I would look at our transportation needs. There's lots of different ways of doing that. Obviously, staffing, you know, are we overstaffed? Do we not have enough staff? Do our teachers have full class schedules when it comes? So, you just have to just, you know, peel back the layers on each and every department, maintenance, you know? Are we getting our bang for our buck out of our maintenance? Do we have too many people and not enough maintenance getting done? Are we hiring out too many maintenance jobs? You know, look at that whole process. How do we spend our money on our supplies? Would it be better off going through a co-op, purchasing our supplies as opposed to an independent dealer, maybe buying all our supplies one time a year? I don't know about up here, but at the ESU that I'm at, we've started a pretty nice co-op with all of our school supplies. They've always done that through the ESUs, but it's a little better now where we can buy direct and we have more vendors to choose from through our ESU co-op-ing than we used to have. At least that's my experience down at Arapahoe. I don't know what that's like, what that's like. There are some schools that are using a co-op system to purchase their food commodities. Pegler Siskel out of Lincoln started a co-op with schools in the state of Nebraska trying to reduce the cost. So, I would, I would look at, you know, anything and everything that we spend our dollars on.
I know you've touched on this a little bit, but how do you find yourself getting involved with the community other than the school?
Well, I think it starts with living here. And I also think it starts with buying a house. I can remember when I moved to Arapahoe and everybody, board member comes up and he says, he says, "People don't think you're going to stay." And I said, "Well, why is that?" He says, "Well, you'll just find someplace to rent and you'll be gone." And I said, "Well, I think it's important that I buy a house." So, I did buy a house in Arapahoe. My wife and I did aggressively look at finding a position, again, through North Platte Community College, through McCook Community Colleges, looking at Wayne State, trying to do some online things, you know? Unfortunately, those things never played out, but I think it's important that I purchase and that I'm a taxpayer because if someone's going to come and complain to me about taxes, "Hey, I own a house, too. My valuation went up and guess what? I pay taxes just like you do." So, I may not own a quarter of a ground, but I am still a taxpayer. I think it's also important to get involved in the community. Like I said, be a part of the Legion Club and be a part of the community club. Our community club does great things down in Arapahoe. We do chamber bucks where people can buy, you know, fake money and spend the money in the community type of thing. We do Christmas programs, we do Fourth of July parades, so I'm involved in those. I just, I just think that's important to go to those meetings and to be a part of those communities. There's Alliance Club, which is in part of the district, it's in, it's in our district, but it's in the town west of us called Holbrook, and they have a big sale every year. So, try to be a part of that, go over and assist, you know, try to help them unload. It's a consignment sale at the Lions Club that also supports Arapahoe and Holbrook. So, go over there and try to assist unloading stuff off of vehicles and things like that. Just do what I came to be a part of. It also gets me accessible. It gives me the opportunity to be around people so they can ask questions.
What are your thoughts on early childhood development?
I think it's great. Next year, they're changing it from preschool to pre-kindergarten. So that is a new rule that is just going to be coming out. They've revamped that whole new rule, you know, for next year. I'm, I'm all for it. Again, I'd have to look at your space. I, I think this year you have 11 kids enrolled in that. You know, is there any way that we can increase those numbers? You know, how can we get that higher? I don't know how many kids you can get in your room, but I think that room should be at, at a maximum. You know, how can we expand that program? Like I said, in Arapahoe, we're bringing in 41 kids into our preschool, 20 in the morning and 20 in the afternoon. I think it's very important. I see that transition is so much better when that preschooler now goes down into that kindergarten classroom. It's just, it's night and day.
Thank you.
Any more staff?
Yeah, I don't get to ask them any?
Yes.
I have a very similar question, you know, that you talked about parent involvement. How would you describe the level of parent involvement in activities and educational programs in your school?
I think it's probably a lot of the same people helping with a lot of different avenues. My kids are only over in the elementary right now, so I can't speak for high school. But, you know, when it's helping with parties or helping with any classroom thing, it's usually, for us, it's usually a lot of the same faces that I see over there.
I think that's the same in high school too. It seems to be the same, parents doing most of it.
And you're looking at me to have one that has had kids all the way through the system. And basically, if, if you have the right person ahead, if you have something going on to coordinate and ask for help, there's help out there. You just got to ask. It's not going to come and knock on your door. You got to ask. And I, and I've found that you ask and there'll be people there to help.
If a parent or community member were to walk into this school for the first time, what would make an impression on that person?
I guess, I always think everything always looks clean. You know, there's, there's activity, but everybody is always, whenever I come in, everybody's in a classroom. There's never any misbehaving, you know, everybody seems to be doing what they need to do. But yet, I've looked in, when I've been over at the elementary and looked in on my kids' classes that I'm passing by, and they're smiling, but they're attentive. I guess, you know, my kids seem to like school too, though, so.
Control.
The, uh, things that's changed a lot in the last few years, sorry to say, with all the threats and stuff's been going on. The school's really a secure place. As being on the fire department, I don't know what was 20, 15, 20 years ago, we had a bomb threat at a wrestling, our big wrestling meet. And being on with the gas company and one individual day that happened to me, I was taking a survey out and you come around and you, what we have is like a sonar detection for any gas leaks or anything. And it kind of looks like a gun. I mean, it's big, but it, you carry it like a gun. And I was doing this side of the school and as I passed the street going over to the elementary, I'm going, "I don't know if I should be doing this." And I says, "I'm up by a school and this kid's out on the school ground." And about that, it's quick, two teachers put the old eye and one was coming right at me. And the other one was, you know, she was like, she was ready to get the kids huddled or into safe place. But, and I apologized for it, but I says, "I was thinking about this when I was coming across the street." And, and she says, "Well, I'm glad it's just you doing this and stuff." Because it's far enough away that she didn't recognize me. And, and like I said, I think my kids had used her as, been her student before. But I, I think the safety is real well up here. And the facility is overall is, is pretty good, except again for the junior high building. It needs some, some attention.
Are there any support groups, you know, that community people do, like activity boosters, music boosters, things like that, that are active in your?
They do, that would probably be more high school ages.
High school, the band, FFA. Do you have your own band booster group or? Yes. Okay. Some have, some have it under one, one umbrella, but others do it.
It's a music, it's a music.
Yeah, music boosters.
Athletic boosters.
Yep.
There's a lot of parents supporting both those organizations, I think, isn't there? Thanks.
Okay. My first question here, how do you communicate most effectively, effectively with faculty and staff? What describing process you would use to keep the staff informed of school issues?
Well, I think, first of all, is, is communication has to be important. The use of emails has made that a little easier sending out. And what I try to do is if I send an email to staff, I'm going to send it to everybody on staff. I like to at the end of, after each board meeting, is send an update to the staff. You know, what happened, you know, from the board meeting the previous night. If there wasn't a staff person there, you know, reporting back to, you know, the Plainview Education Association or anybody else. I'm not big on, on weekly meetings. I think I leave that up to the building principal to, to hold the weekly meetings. But if there's something I feel is important, then I would attend possibly a high school, a 7-12 weekly meeting or so everybody can hear the same thing. But, but I also think it's important that, that I do have staff meetings and I'll try to have those if there's an important issue that needs to be discussed. We had quite an issue down in Arapahoe about social media. So instead of trying to send something out on an email or trying to meet individually with, with certain groups of, of staff, I thought it was important to have an entire staff meeting there to hear the same message and to ask questions and, and to try to, you know, have some kind of result, so.
How would you characterize your relationship with employee groups in your present position? And what, if anything, would you change in these relationships?
You know, again, I've always, I don't, I don't believe in micromanaging and I've always considered myself a coworker. My job isn't any more important or any less important than anybody else's job. And that goes from the bus driver that gets up in the morning to the cook making sure that the milk is the right temperature, the food is ready to serve, that custodians do their job and that teachers, you know, do theirs. Again, I'm not going to come into your classroom and tell you how to teach. I would like to think that if I treat you like a professional, you're going to know that job and you're going to be able to do that job. I'm there to support you. I'm there to help you do your job. So I, I tell my staff, when we're not around kids, to please call me Charlie. That's who I am, you know? Obviously, when we're around kids, it's Mr. Kernan, you know? It's Mr. Reed. It's, it's the professionalism that you have in front of the kids. But I'd like to be thought of as a coworker.
Okay, and my last question here, Charlie, you said something that kind of intrigued me, so I'm going to vary from my questions that I usually ask here. But you said that you went and, and you're able to, you increased your preschool by good numbers. That was impressive. And I, and I know you did some of it by going out and providing bus service and stuff. I, I would like you to explain to me how else you recruited these kids in because I think that was, that was a really good idea. And you also said that you charge them a hundred dollars a day?
Excuse me, I meant a month, sorry.
Because I was just a number.
I apologize. Darn, now it's not such a, there's a math guy with me.
I thought that's probably what it was. They, they must have told me that, you know? Anyway, but how were you able to recruit more kids to come, more, get more preschoolers to come to your school?
Well, first of all, I apologize for the hundred dollar a day. It's a hundred dollars a month. We, we've been operating our preschool, so this, I, I didn't come in to start up a preschool, but we were operating it at, for nine years, I believe, now that preschool has been operating. And again, they wanted to keep it capped at 15. And I, and of course, we have the room for 20. And I said, "Well, then what we're going to do is," and, and what we would always do previously before I got there, is we would not let anybody opt in. If they weren't in the district, we just, that, that was it. And so now, I'm letting kids opt in to get our numbers up to 20. That word has now gotten out in the communities, in the, the neighboring schools, that we will take a kid, you know, into our preschool and we will come and get that kid. But these are the parameters and so far, people are buying into that.
Charlie, what role does the superintendent have in enlisting parents as partners in the education of their children?
Say that again?
What role does the superintendent have in enlisting parents as partners in the education of their children?
Well, I need to be alongside, you know, you trying to get parents into our building. I mean, we all struggle with that, trying to get in with help. The gentleman said if we just ask, you know, they will come. There are people out there. So it'll be my job to get out there and ask and, and to try to get that word out through groups here in town, through community groups, that we, we want people to come up and help us. We need people to come up and help us. So I would, I would just, it's a phrase we used at Winnebago, is beat the drum, you know, and try to get people, you know, and just keep beating the drum.
Right, in your view of education, discuss the balance between curricular and extracurricular classes? And what role do extracurricular activities play in the school system?
Well, I think we all see a decline in participation in extracurricular activities. Our kids have a lot to do or maybe don't, don't have a lot to do and they get home with cell phones and, and cable and satellite TV. That's, I, I think extracurricular is very important. I was very fortunate and I think that's one of the things that I like about a small rural school is that kids have the opportunities to be a part of a lot of things. Very fortunate, you know, I, I grew up in a, in a school in the inner city and we didn't have a whole lot. But yet, you know, we didn't have band, we didn't have a shop for me to learn and, and we just never went anywhere to do that. You know, with my son growing up in Wakefield, he was able to do those things, had the opportunity to participate in speech, went down and won a third place medal in speech, got to participate in track, won a gold medal at track. Football in the year, other than the year you guys beat them when you went to state. Was able to win two state championships in football, baseball. So I, I, I see, and he was also part of their music and, and play productions and, and I see all of those things fitting in for an opportunity for a kid to really experience a high school, to have a really wonderful experience, high school. Wasn't much with, with an instrument, but I think he gets that from me, so. But he could sing and that he did get from me. Um, and I think it's tough to try to get our kids. And I think it's important that, that we support all of those activities. FCC LA, FFA, those are all great programs for our kids to get leadership experiences from. It gets them out of the building and, and around other kids. It teaches them to socialize. A lot of those things are face-to-face socialization, other than just texting on your phone and sending emails, so.
And what is your position on NISA testing as it is now? And your thoughts about going to MAPS testing as the Nebraska Accountability Test?
I've heard that. I was just at an ESU meeting and I think that charge is going to be led by ESU Bob Ewing over there, that he's going to be trying to push for the MAPS testing. We used MAPS testing at Winnebago and I thought it was a wonderful tool, being able to look and see where kids might be missing, you know, some of their instruction. I, I think it's a wonderful tool. We all know the problems we're having NISA. They are now going to look at the testing model that they have and review that. Getting kicked out of that while you're sitting there doing your tests is just a horrible, horrible thing. You know, just upsets a kid. And as far as, you know, what was the second part of that question?
Well, about MAPS possibly taking the place.
And, and at Arapahoe, when I first, my first year there, we just did the MAPS testing in the high school and we still did the Iowa basic test down at the elementary. And then last year, we made the switch over. So this year will be our first year where everybody's working on the MAPS testing. I like the MAPS testing, so if it was our tool, that would be great. I'm sure you see legislation too now where one of our senators wants to use a college entrance exam for all of our 11th grade students. They believe by doing that, that gives them more skin in the game, having a college entrance exam because most kids are taking that college entrance exam now. Not all of them are excited about taking, you know, a NISA test and a college entrance exam. So they think if they were to eliminate that and have that as one tool, that, that would be beneficial. And I can see the logic behind that, taking just the one test instead of having our kids take two as 11th graders. Thank you.
How do you lead staff and create positive staff morale?
I, I missed the first part.
How do you lead staff and then create a positive staff morale?
I think the way I lead staff is, is to try to explain the objective and, and explain to them the reasons why we are trying to do something. I think, I think they deserve that and not just come and say, "Hey, we're going to be, we're going to be doing APL training next year." Well, I would give them some reasons why I think we should be doing APL next year. I think it's important that, that I lead and I, when I lead, I need to serve you. I need to be there to help you do your job and not just, not just be top-down, but, but to be there as a resource for you as, as we go through this process. Get your ideas, get your thoughts, you know, your feelings about things and not just, this is the way it's going to be done. Not just dictator tip-shine, dictator ship-type. But, but to get you involved in that process.
What do you see as the most important role of the superintendent as it pertains to the faculty and staff? I think you kind of answered that a little bit, but what do you see as like the most important role? Would that be, you know, just sitting down and explaining the objectives and?
I, I think my role is, is to make your job the best it can be. To give you the tools and to give you the training to make your job, to help you do your job the best you can do. I've always felt that, you know, not only am I a coworker, but I'm a public servant. And what I mean by that is, is I need to serve, you know, not only the people in our community, but the people here in our school community. I need to serve you so you can do your job, so you do, again, have those tools, those resources. That's what I feel my job is.
How do you go about implementing, implementing needed change such as declining enrollment, co-opping? And, and we talked a little bit about the new testing stuff coming down the pipe. So how do you go about like implementing that kind of a need for that change?
Well, I, I think it starts with the discussion, you know, and then, you know, what are our needs? Identify the needs. And then what, what, what objectives do we want to try to set in order to meet those needs? You do the communication, you do the planning. It, it's no different than an action plan. You set your objectives, you know, how are you going to meet those objectives? You set goals, how are you going to meet those goals? How are you going to measure those goals when it comes to the end of that? And so you, you start with that and you just, you work through the process.
In what, in any capacity, teacher-administration, what sort of unique, out-of-the-box type of idea did you implement that you saw results?
I, I think, first of all, trying to manage a budget and how can we do things different where, where we can get the biggest bang for our buck out of our teaching staff would be one. I've mentioned those scenarios with our band teacher, you know, helping out with the media, RFC S teacher helping out with our guidance counseling, you know, how can, you know, piping out distance learning classes instead of just receiving. I think those are some things that, that. But I think another thing that I really learned at Winnebago, and I touched on this earlier too, was how can we help each kid? You know, what are the ways? How creative can we be? Do we need to get this kid doing some, some online classes to help them graduate? Do they need to stay home because they, they might have a child at home? So how can we help them still work towards, towards their degree? We've got a student at Arapahoe that has a child at home that also needs to work. We're trying to get her her high school diploma. She's 21 years old. So how are we going to try to get her a diploma? Through online classes, bringing her up to school? Can we get her up here to school so she can meet the teachers? Of course, we did a lot of that at Winnebago. How can we get kids in an alternative classroom setting to try to help them, you know, graduate? Kids over there are saddled with so many different issues in life, you know? How can we get them to school? Young parents at Winnebago, again, 15, 14, 15-year-old young ladies that have babies at home. How are we going to best service them? You know? What kind of educational plan can we try to come up with that's going to help this kid be successful?
What is the one thing you learned from each step in your career as a teacher administrator that you think has helped you become the type of superintendent our school needs?
I think the thing that's helped me is I understand each role. I know what that's like to walk into my gym first thing in the morning and, and to clean it. So my gym is ready and, and clean for my kids when they come in for the first period. You know, I understand taking attendance, you know, how important that is to make sure that all our kids are in school, especially on a bad weather day. You know, did all our kids make it? That might be driving in. Lunch counts. I know how important that is, you know, to the kitchen people, you know? They need their lunch count so they can prepare the meal. I think along each way, you know, understanding being a principal myself so I can help your building principal, being a teacher myself and not all that far removed, you know, from able to assist you with, with strategies on behavior strategies with kids or with instructional strategies with kids. How to best serve the board, having been a superintendent for three years, you know, setting visions, looking at budgets and looking at trying to set long-range goals. Working with communities, being a part of a community group, you know, trying to get their involvement and being a part of the community, just, just so I'm either there to answer a question or we can help to come up to our school through a mentoring program. I think do teammates work? Do you do? Okay. So I think, I think all those things that I've learned. I, I understand the only job I probably, I used to deliver, be a delivery driver, but I've never driven a bus. So I can't, I can't really speak, can't speak for a bus driver.
How would you characterize your relationships with employee groups and/or groups advocating? Oh, I'm sorry. That was done. Sorry. Motivating others to follow your lead, especially in the face of resistance, is a key leadership trait. Describe a situation in which you motivated others to follow your lead in the face of resistance and how did you accomplish that?
Well, I, I guess for me, it's important, again, to be a co-leader, not just the leader because there's lots of people that sit in a room every day that have ideas and great ideas. I, I'm going to have my own set of values and my own set of ideas, you know, but I need to know what Mr. Green's are, you know? Maybe he's got a better idea or a better way of doing something. So I think it's very important that you solicit, you know, other people's ideas. I think that's the first thing. Again, to serve, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm here to serve as a public servant. You know, I'm entrusted with people's two most precious things. We all are. Their kids and their money, you know? How are we going to take care of those things? And I take that very seriously, you know? And bottom line, and it always comes down to the bottom line, what's best for the kid? You know, what's best for our, our kids and our school? Maybe sometimes it doesn't matter what that cost is, but it's what's better for our kids.
Do you have any questions for us?
I do. Heck yeah. Now, this is going to be tough because I thought we were going to be all by ourselves instead of sitting in front of your bosses. So I might have to rephrase a few.
Yes, I can take back page twenty-nine.
I already got, I already got cross off one of them. I do hold that. What do you think is the biggest improvement that you think this school district needs to make?
I feel that participation numbers need to improve. I think that sometimes our kids act really well and the parents need to be the ones chewed out and conditioned until they straighten up. Maybe something on that order. I, we, we don't have a, when I see our, sometimes our parents at events not even really sitting together anymore, they're kind of in little groups spread out. That's different than it was 15 years ago, 10 years ago. So that's a little, you know, that's a little disturbing to me. I think participation is a huge thing that needs to change.
And I know you asked that question earlier about, about participation. And, and you know, and sometimes we get stuck in a rut where we just kind of keep doing the same things. Maybe we need to look at, look at different activities, you know? I, I thought it was really weird at Winnebago when we started a, a checkers and chess club, you know, after school. But we started having kids show up for that. And, and I think kids need places to go. They don't, and we have to give them a reason to want to stay here too, you know, instead of doing the same old things. What else, what other things are other schools doing or what other kind of activities, you know, can we do along those lines? Anybody else?
Well, when you're at Wakefield, I mean, look at their baseball program. And Wayne, with kids declining participation. And it's not indigenous to hear, but, you know, I coached junior high, Dean helped me with football this year. We have kids, they're just not going out. And it's not just here. You would agree with that. So it'd be nice if we could find some kind of a formula to light some people's tails on fire a little bit. Because it is really important. I can go through the kids that I have for thirty-some years of coaching. And a lot of the best students are the ones that are doing the speech, as you said before, and wrestling and football and everything else, FFA and the whole works. And we have so many kids not participating in much of anything that that is, it's really tough. It's tough to see some of these kids not do anything. Or very little.
We just start making them. Making a requirement. Not, not an elective, but a requirement. You know, and that's one of the things that Wisner did with their junior high sports. It was not an option not to participate.
That's the way a lot of smaller schools have done. That's the way my high school was, my junior, when we were in junior high.
And hopefully you get the bug, you know? You know, obviously, you've got, if you can get the bug with the little kids wrestling, if you get them at a young age and get them involved and get them active. You know, I talked to my son, you know, about getting kids, this year, I think at Allen, they had eight kids out for basketball. You know, and I say, he goes, how do I build that? You start from the bottom. You start at the bottom and you work your way up. I said, go spend the time on Sundays at Ponca with your kids, you know? Get into junior high, you know? Get them in there. Start building them up. And, and you just got to work from the bottom up. But you got to be there, you got to show them you care and you got to be involved with them in those, because those take a lot of efforts. Because you're asking a coach to do something on a weekend that they're, they're not getting paid to do, you know? Summer camps. We all have expectations of our coaches to be doing something with our kids during the summer. But what does a coach really get out of that? Does he get paid to do that? He does because you could say, well, he's on a 12-month salary, so yeah, he's getting paid to do that. But they do that because that's how you, that's how you build interest in your programs, you know? And like I told my son, you got to work at the bottom and you got to build it up and hopefully, hopefully get it. So we won't have just eight kids out. Anybody else? What are the two biggest issues facing your students in this school? I know poverty's been mentioned a few times. I, I guess that would.
I'm not as down with it.
I would have.
My mobility.
Home life.
Home life.
You know, when the, when there's strong parental support at home, 95% of the kids are going to be successful. They're going to try hard, they care and stuff. But, you know, and this is, it just isn't a fun review, but when, you know, there's so many broken families and things like that, that, that never used to happen, you know, the kids, if they don't get their assignment done, you know, they're just the ones that are answering for it. The parents are not buying in that much. So.
Yeah. We sure have a lot more poverty, a lot sure, a lot higher mobility, you know, single parent families. You know, it's, a lot has changed, you know, since, since we began. Can you tell me about your, I, I understand you're getting laptops, the teachers are?
We just got them.
Just got them?
Yeah.
Okay. And you have carts? Are you a one-to-one?
No, but I think we have, yeah, we're close. We got enough carts and I think devices that it's close.
And how updated is, are those devices?
He keeps them very near.
I would propose not to support it.
Okay?
We have plenty of computers available.
Okay.
Those are not supported. Technology is very important. We want a really quick form. We, we get plenty of time to, to use computers and things like that. And I would propose we need more time face-to-face with the children, with the children.
You certainly don't want to replace the teacher with a computer.
Well, I still think it should just be paper and pencil. And it should just still be addition and multiplication, but a lot has changed, you know, over the years. And jobs, jobs have changed. And so.
I mean, it's an important part of our society without doubt and they need to be familiar with it.
I think her key word there is familiar with it. I think as long as kids are familiar, which they pretty much are, you know, a lot of them have it at home and some don't, but they still get that here.
They are.
That's all I have. If, if anybody would like a copy of my portfolio, you can find them online for $5.99.